So you guys are ready to roll?
Yeah.
All right. Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planet Board for Monday, November 5th, 2018. On tonight's agenda, we have a continued business, we have some old business, and some other businesses' updates. The first matter on the agenda is a site plan review for 677 and 705 Patacun Boulevard. This is known as Market Basket. We did receive a letter from Attorney Gregory Curtis requesting that the matter be continued to the November 19th date so they could still work out some more matters after sitting down with all parties. So what's the request of the board for the continuance of Patacun Boulevard, AKA Market Basket?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the Market Basket application until our November 19th, 2018 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. That motion carries. The next matter, we'll jump quickly ahead to the Phoenix Ave paving matter. We know that's going to be a quick matter, so we'll take care of that matter first. You want to come up first and tell us what's going on, and we'd like to get you out of here. Chair for Phoenix Ave.
So this is a project kind of in coordination with McClellan Concrete and Company with the city of Lowell. There's an administrative consent order with 180 Phoenix Ave. And when we heard that there would be paving, there was kind of a collaborative effort with the city to extend that pavement where Phoenix Ave currently ends approximately 300 feet. This is, you know, purely just a, you know, informational purpose for you to you to kind of just be aware that they're extending that small portion of Phoenix Ave.
Board members, have any questions on Phoenix Ave?
Just a question, did that need to go before conservation?
No, so the extent of the paving is far enough, that's not in a jurisdictional area, which would be 100 feet of wetlands. But it actually is a concern with the EPA, which is why they have this administrative consent order to extend the pavement, because at one point there were concerns of runoff into, stormwater runoff into wetlands that are across the train tracks.
Sure.
But that's being addressed with this pavement.
Okay. So technically, we don't need a motion on this matter, but I'll make a motion that we place this on file, so we'll have that for our record.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that matter's approved. Thank you. Moving along, we have minor modification on 165 Thorndike Street. The proposal has requested that the board to review programming changes for Thorndike Exchange, development, and a secret mining modification. The number of residential units and total square footage of office and commercial space have been updated since the original approval. The project received site plan review and special permits on August of 2016. When we hear from the applicant, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Rick Freiberg from TEC. I'm the civil engineer for the project. As you mentioned, the project was last approved about two years ago. During that time, they've been working to fit out the building and make the necessary site improvements to accommodate the development. In the process of doing so, the market has sort of dictated a shift towards more residential than commercial space. And so what we're here tonight seeking from the board is a minor modification. The size of the buildings is the same as what was approved originally. The difference has been that the commercial space has shifted more into residential space. And the nature of that shift is that there's less traffic impact and a lower parking need for residential when compared to commercial. The project contains the same amount of green space that was previously proposed, the same drainage system that was approved has already been installed. And they're working inside the building to construct the units within the existing mill and are contemplating the start of the second phase of the project, which would be the building appendage. So we're here tonight seeking to amend those uses as noted in the announcement for the meeting, and I look forward to answering any questions. Thank you.
Sure. Could you just tell us the change in the residential unit, if you could? I know, what was it, 152 before?
Yes, sir. Yep. So it was 152 residential units before, and actually, we're only proposing 140, but the difference is that the units have grown. They used to be much smaller units.
Okay.
And so we're proposing now 140 units. Previously, the biggest change on the plan is previously there was 30,000 square feet of commercial space proposed.
Right.
That's been reduced now to 10,75. So it's about a third of the commercial space, as was originally approved, and that space has been sort of reallocated. The restaurant use is about 1,000 square feet bigger. That was approved at 8,900 square feet, and now proposed 9,800 square feet. So about 1,000 square feet of that, 20,000 square foot difference went to the restaurants, and the balance went to making the units larger. And like I said, as part of the shift from commercial space to residential space, obviously, the major significance for the site plan is that there's a lesser need for parking. Office space generates a higher parking demand, and also less intensive traffic use coming in and out of the driveway, which of course was, I think, the topic of a lot of discussion when the project was approved two years ago.
And one thing, so before you indicated that you had 160 spaces at the, for Gallagher Station for parking.
Mm-hmm.
So now, I think I read somewhere, I thought, now you have, is it 145 or something, is it?
That's right, yeah. So the way that, it's structured based on the time of need is probably the best way to describe it. So there's 145 spaces that are available to us at all times of the day. Our peak parking demand, because it's so much of the development is now residential, is actually on the weekends and during the nighttime, when residents are home and their vehicles are home with them. So in those periods, on the weekend and on the weekday evenings, the garage for the LRTA is, you know, really underutilized. Their crunch is during the day, during, you know, during business hours, and our peak demand during those business hours has been substantially reduced. So those 145 spaces are available to us at all times, which includes during the workday. But in the evenings and on the weekends, we've been told that there's additional spaces available to accommodate the project.
Okay.
I should mention also that, you know, we've been working closely with city staff through this process, and it's been a wonderful experience for us. The city manager, you know, city staff has been great to work with. They've helped us kind of go through these changes. We saw that there were two comments, letters issued, one from the city's transportation engineer, and one from the fire department, and they worked with us quickly to help get those questions resolved prior to coming here tonight.
Could you comment on the one from the fire department, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. Yep.
We received a memo today from the building commission. I don't know if, do you have that one?
Is that the one dated today, November 5th?
Yeah, from Dave Fuller?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Could you just explain a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Because I know the first round of recommendations was to get approval from the fire department, so, which still stands up till, just wanted to see how you, what do you want to comment on that? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure, of course. So the initial round of comments from the fire department had concerns about the width of the roadways that access the building. That was sort of the genesis of it. We prepared, and I actually have with me, if you're interested in seeing it, a firetruck turning template to show how the firetruck would circulate the site. But actually, they even headed that off at the pass today, and it sounds like they've reviewed everything. And this letter that's provided by Mr. Fuller documents that the chief, and the summary part of his, "Chief Winward informed me that he and Deputy Chief Casey can accept the 16 feet," which is the width of the driveway adjacent to us, "given that the new building, which is part of the second phase of development, has access to three sides that do meet the 20-foot requirement, and is sufficient for the department were tasked to respond in the case of emergency."
Okay. So you're satisfying them, obviously. I noticed just one other comment from staff was, and I don't think it's anything that important, was that, where was it? Condition for that in the future, will I just have to see the landscape plan?
That's correct, sir. Yep. And that's a condition.
Can I understand this is going to be, unless this changed, before you're going to try to do it in two phases? If my memory serves me correctly, one being the commercial restaurant period, and then come in and do the residential?
Just about, yep. So our two phases were, there's the existing mill building, and then there's an appendage that we built. So the existing mill building is sort of an L shape. We'd be constructing a new building appendage that would make it sort of a U. That U, that appendage that we'd be adding as part of the second phase, is adjacent to the Keith Academy driveway. As part of our original approval two years ago, what we had talked about with Keith Academy folks is that part of the driveway is very dark. They indicated the desire for improved landscaping and improved lighting along that corridor, which we had committed to and remain committed to. That's sort of a finish, as you can imagine, so that would occur probably after we went vertical with the second phase of the building, is when that lighting and landscaping, which we've committed to, would be enacted.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I have no further more questions. Does it time, any board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just the, following from the chairman's question regarding the comments from David Fuller on the letter dated today, November 5th. The second paragraph regarding the width of the exit and entrance of the site with the land, with the island that separates the two, in order to ensure that the movement is restricted to prevent the left-hand turn in and out. I'd like to know how you're addressing that issue.
So the, the second paragraph, I'll just read it aloud just for the benefit of the public. So the fire department would like to see the entries into the parking lot, and so in this case, we're talking about right here, this one access point that enters the site. Would like to see that expanded from the present 16 feet to 20 feet. So what he's referring to is there's a 16-foot entrance and a 16-foot wide exit, and it's separated by a scored concrete island of about four feet. So I think what's not immediately obvious, if you look at the plan, is that that's not a curbed island. I think he was concerned about, and I'll get into the, so if this is not possible, they'd like to see the elimination of the island that separates the entry from the exit to the property. The concern is getting trucks into and around the property. So his concern was more about getting access into the site for the fire trucks. And I think what's not immediately obvious when you look at the plan is that this is not a curbed island, it's a flush concrete island for exactly that purpose, to allow that if a firetruck had to make a swing over the island, that that would be, it would be able to accommodate that firetruck swing. Sorry.
Just was going to add, there are no, there's no signs in the island either.
Correct.
There were, there was previously a light fixture, but there is not any longer. So it'll be mountable curb, essentially.
That's right. Yeah. So the idea is to delineate and separate traffic visually, but there's no impediment to a firetruck access into the site.
And that was the original approval on that?
No, it's slightly different. We've sort of gone through, yeah, we've sort of gone through a couple iterations. There was, at one point, no island. Then at one point, there was a pork chop kind of shaped island that would direct cars only to the right. We've had a lot of discussion with the city, and as part of our approval, what was discussed was that there would be a trial period of 60 days upon occupancy of the commercial space, which was really the sort of the driver of it. You know, the commercial space is what's going to be really active during the peak hours on Thorndike Street, and the commercial space is going to be the one that's used for this parking lot. The parking lot is going to be for commercial space residential, uses will park in the garage, and therefore would not be coming in and out of the main driveway. So what we've discussed, what we've discussed with city staff is to allow right and left turns out of there with an island configuration that you see on this plan for a trial period of 60 days or less if the city deems that it's, that it needs to be terminated. And that, within that same footprint of a driveway, there could be a pork chop shaped island installed that would allow for only right turns out instead of left, or, excuse me, allow for only right turns out and prohibit left turns out.
Just, I just want to read from the conditions. And so from the letter from staff dated November 5th, item number 3A, "Access to the proposed site," this was a condition of the approval. "Access to the proposed site from Thorndike Street shall be limited to right-in, right-out movements only. The driveway entrance shall, 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 be constructed with a channelization island to prevent vehicles, to prevent vehicles from turning left into and out of the parking lot. This restriction shall be in place as long as Thorndike remains in its current four-lane configuration." So I'm a little confused as to how we got to where we are right now.
Sure. Yep. The key sentence is the very last part of it. And then, on that same letter, under B of that condition, 3B, "The city has drawn preliminary plans showing the necessary improvements which could allow for left-hand turns into the development." Those roadway widening, since we were last in front of the board, those roadway widening that's referenced in that preliminary plan has been constructed as part of the city's Mass Works grant. Thorndike Street was widened, and as part of the widening, there was an expanded left-hand turn pocket that was built. And that's the, that's the basis. If we keep reading down on condition three, and the widening of Thorndike Street to include the center-left turn lane, which is what was constructed, these roadway improvements will be constructed in one of the following ways, and there's a reference of how to go about constructing it, seeking federal grants, seeking state grants, et cetera.
Right.
And it's left off this letter, but in the original conditions of approval, there's reference to the 60-day trial period.
So how did, Natasha, if you could clarify, so are we, is Thorndike get the full functioning, fully functioning the way it was intended to be with the works grants funds? And does that mean we are now allowing the left-hand turn? I'm confused as to where we are in this junct, at this juncture.
Yeah. So Thorndike Street has been widened, and there is a center turn lane. I am still concerned about the left-in, left-out, the safety of that turn.
Right.
Which is why we've had numerous conversations with the developer, specifically on the subject of the channelization island. The agreement does state, if the widening happens, that the city will perform a 60-day trial. So essentially, and we are, that won't happen until probably spring of 2019, when the residential and commercial space and restaurants are built out and actually functioning, because we want to evaluate it when it's at sort of more of a full build condition. The traffic, Rick is the traffic engineer, he's going to reevaluate the trip generation based on the revised commercial use and provide a memo. They're looking at, for peak traffic, in the PM, it would only be nine cars making that turn during that timeframe. Again, I still have concerns about the safety of that turn, but we did agree that if the Thorndike Street was widened, as it has been, that we would look at whether or not that's a safe option.
Yeah, because I was going to say, under 3C.
3C.
The last sentence is, the restrictions may, not will, may include prohibiting left turns out of the, so.
Yes, and they are aware that that is entire, that is absolutely a possibility. I am, I don't, pursuant to our previous discussion, I wouldn't make a left turn out of that development.
Right.
But it may be a safe turning condition at 8:00 PM. It might be a safe turning condition at 10:00 AM, and that's why we will do a 60-day trial to evaluate if that is indeed safe, and if it needs to be, if we need to revise the island such that it is not, it's not possible to make a left, or if we need signage, which, you know, people don't always obey signs. However, in terms of the city's liability for that safety, if we have clearly posted that it's not safe to make a turn during these times, that, yes, that's the thought process. It's, they, you know, there's a, the condition was met, and we will evaluate whether or not we think it's safe.
Yeah. That's my concern, because, you know, widening the access for, or making it feasible for the firetrucks to get in there for a fire emergency, well, we may just make it so that they'll be responding with the jaws of life, you know, to a horrific accident, people coming out trying to take a left out of there.
Yeah. And I also think it will be virtually impossible to make, I mean, it will be very challenging to make a left turn out, because there is such a heavy concentration of traffic there, at least until the next project down on Thorndike Street, which is the two lanes going on to the connector, because right now, everybody queues in this one lane. So that could alleviate some of the traffic congestion, that's certainly the plan. But I agree, and we've had very candid conversations about our concern about the safety there. I do feel that the left end is going to be, I think that's going to be a safe condition because there is room for vehicles to queue. Yeah. And we are actually in conversations about trying to determine how we capture the public's comments, form that 60-day trial, and maybe consider even looking at putting up cameras or something like that, just to see how people are behaving.
What are the movements?
Yeah. It's sort of up in the air, and we haven't had a conversation about that, but that's, that is what we're thinking.
And again, we're, you know, everybody's excited about the project, but boy, safety is number one.
It's a very busy corridor, and there's no ways about it. We know it's challenging. It's probably one of the reasons why it was one of the last mills to be redeveloped, is probably because of challenges like this. But, you know, we look forward to, you know, the new roadway improvements that were recently constructed by the city across the front door, the future improvements that are coming at both the connector and the Lord Overpass, and we're committed to doing whatever the city asks of us as part of this trial period.
Because I'm just concerned in the final, and again, we just had more conversations, but if final analysis, if it's not safe to make that movement, we really, you need to design it so that it's more difficult to make a movement that's not allowed.
Yes, sir.
Agreed.
Yes, sir.
And I would also mention that the Thorndike widening intend, there will be a synchronization of the lights that hasn't occurred yet, and there are some lane shift skips that haven't been drawn. So the Thorndike widening is not complete at this point. It will be in the spring, about the same time that they come online, so I think it'll, it will give us a good, I think pretty quickly, we will know if it's a safe and doable thing. And I do agree, we need to make it such that people physically cannot turn, that like, if it's, if it's mountable, it would be, people, people will still make the turn.
Right. Exactly. Correct.
But we can make it such that the right-in, and assuming the left-in is allowable, it can be a half pork chop island, essentially.
Sure.
If you can envision that. And then it, it doesn't need to be mountable curb on the way out.
Correct. Right.
Yeah. And they're, and they've been very, very happy to work with us.
I understand what the challenges are.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Because I think, again, I don't want that to get lost in...
No, it will not. It is definitely on my priority list.
And then, Natasha, if you could actually, on the parking, the change in the mix from the commercial to residential is based on what was originally approved, with the change in the mix, from your perspective, looking at that, is that in proportion with what was originally approved? And I agree with the theory on the residential, you know, you tore that on the weekends, the parking garage, and there's not a lot there.
Yeah.
I will tell you, on the evenings, when there's a Bruins game or a Celtics game, it's pretty packed.
It's busy.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, I did, I did the calculations as well, just to check theirs, and look, yeah, the shared-use parking table ends up with 190 is the peak usage. They have 197 spaces. We're comfortable with the parking configuration, given that they have 140 units, 145 spaces in the garage, and yeah, I think that should work.
And we, and do we have the, I'm assuming they produced the agreement on that? We already have the agreement?
I don't know. I actually, I have not seen the agreement, but I have been in meetings with Jim Scanlon from the LRTA, and he has had, I have seen verbal commitments. Do you all have a letter?
I just leaned back to ask, sorry, Joe Bevelacqua and Scott Moreau here from Le Poli Companies, they believe there is a letter, so we'll produce that for the board.
Yeah, I think it should be submitted to...
If you give it to staff, they'll be sufficient for us. I'm pretty sure you had the letter two years ago. So I know things have changed, and it's gone down a little bit, but...
Yeah.
And that's why I just looked at that comment, but if you give that to staff, I don't think we'd have a problem with that.
Yes, sir.
And then, if you could, I'm just curious, at least conceptually, what you were envisioning for commercial space, because you're eliminating quite a bit, 20,000 square feet approximately, what was it that you're basically giving up in concept?
Yeah, sure. So previously, this, it's kind of hard to see, so I'm just going to draw over it, if that's okay. So the existing mill building is sort of an L shape like this.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And previously, what we're going to do is have it so that this whole leg, which, this is Thorndike Street at the top here, and then you've got the LRTA driveway and the train station here, this whole leg here was going to be commercial on all floors going all the way up. What we've done as part of the desire for larger apartments is we've expanded the apartments around this part of the L, and now it's just the top cap of the building here, on all floors going vertically, that will be commercial. So we haven't given up any floors, and there'll be commercial available on every floor. There's still restaurants planned on what we call the lower level, but it faces towards, there's a bit of topography when you come down the LRTA driveway, so there's an exposed lower level on this side that's not visible from the parking lot side. There'll be a restaurant at that lower level, a restaurant on the parking lot level, and then stacked above that will be, the remaining floors will be commercial on the end.
So are you moving the, because I know there was envisioning an outside area for the restaurant. It's still in that location?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. That's why I recall that it was going to be in that corner.
And in fact, this is a plan view, so it's hard to tell, but there's actually two. There's a, an elevated deck that services the restaurant that's at the level of the parking lot, and then there's a lower patio area that services the lower-level restaurant. Yeah, and this is, this schematic that's shown here, we've had a lot of discussions with LRTA, that's actually LRTA's property, that's on this side of the building here, and so we've, we've been working really hard with them to secure the necessary easements to produce that, and they've been a wonderful partner of the project.
And then what is your, at this point, what's your timeline for the second phase? Are you...
I'd like to pull the foundation permits.
You've pulled the foundation permits?
We're going to be applying...
Just take your name and address, please. Thank you.
Joe Bevelacqua from Le Poli Companies. We're going to be applying for a foundation permit sometime this week.
Oh.
And then full build-out plans are still being constructed now, still being designed.
So that's fairly accelerated from, I think, originally proposed?
Yeah. Originally, we thought there may be a lapse or a gap in between Phase 1 and Phase 2. What we learned, the more we work on the site, you know, we've encountered a lot of unforeseen conditions with these old... conditions with these old properties. And so what we've learned is that we want to take care of especially the foundation systems now before people are living in the phase one building, because it's quite a disturbance to install those foundations. And, and we want to have it into a place where we're, where we're ready, the ground is in great shape by the time they occupy, so we minimize the disturbance on the people living there.
Okay.
That's right. Yep. Yep. That's right.
Good point. Yeah, because you would lose some of your parking, well, you still will during construction, but.
That's right. Yeah. During construction, we'll lose some of the parking. There are 20 parking spaces that are proposed at the same level of the parking lot. So if you're in the parking lot here, you can look underneath this building. It's sort of, the building is suspended above the parking lot almost is the way it will look. Those 20 spaces, you know, if we weren't going to proceed with phase two immediately, those 20 spaces in theory would just be surface parking lot spaces. But our plan is to proceed pretty quickly with what Mr. Bevelacqua was referring to as a foundation permit and a core and shell permit, and then the tenant fit out, which comes after the architects have drawn up the plans for the insides of the building, comes at sort of a later date, but they get started with the structural framework of the building and the like, and that allows that disturbance that I was talking about to happen before people move into these units.
Okay. So just from, for my benefit then, to summarize, basically where we are with that entrance is more of an evolution of the conditions that we had in place. And from staff perspective, and I know the memo, which I kind of chuckled, because the memo says minor modification request, which tells me staff believes it's minor modification. But from a, again, looking at the mix, staff is comfortable with the fact that it, it really is in proportion similar to what the original approval was.
Yeah.
Except it accommodates the residential versus the commercial. Okay. All right. So from my perspective, Mr. Chairman, I, I would see it as a, as a minor modification. I just, my concern was that, was that entrance. I know that was a major concern in the approval. I just want to make sure that that's not inconsistent with what the intent was in the original approval.
Let me just follow up. If they do the trial period, I remember when this came in two years ago, and I remember you were there, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I know Mr. Leopoli did not want the left turn turnout.
Right.
And he went to pull the project that night, and we told him, no, we're going for it anyways. And then I spoke up and said, hey, if things get better and you want to come back for modification, do so.
Mm-hmm.
And from, remember, you encouraged him to go along with that, because he was going to get our vote at that time. And, and you said, and I said, fine, if anybody could make the project better. So I don't have a problem with the expansion of the road and getting things all on board. But I think, and then if we did a trial period to see how it works, but that condition would still stay in effect. And then after the trial period, if you wanted to change it, you still have to come back to us for another minor modification.
Mm-hmm.
Do we agree on that?
Yes.
So that's not going to be changed until it comes back before us.
Correct.
So even though we're approving this tonight, the, the turn situation that we said we could approve on a trial basis, because obviously we want to see how it works.
Right.
So just because they go to do the trial basis period, they want to change it later, they have to still come back before us. As long as that's understood by everybody, I have no problem with the minor modification.
Yeah, the, the way we had sort of envisioned it was after the trial period, we'd come back to you all with an update.
Yep.
With the findings of the, of the study and, you know, we could sort of have a final decision right there.
Yeah. Because I remember saying, you know, to us, you know, whenever we approve a project, anything may change down the road if it comes back. Well, while we hear, you know, if things are going to be better, to make a project better, to improve the site, to improve the traffic radius in and out, then we're open to suggestions. And a lot of times, we do see sites that do come back once either for different other reasons, they come back for a change, and then because of something went different on the site, they made a different roadblocks they didn't anticipate, or they found that something else might work better. So like I say, that was a sticking point at one, at that point in time, but as long as we do a trial basis and come back and find the data is, and then, you know, we'll hear from everybody, and then at that time, they'll come back for another modification. So at least going on the fact of by approving tonight, that thing doesn't change until we do the fallout trial period, then obviously that will give us the information, see how, if that should be changed in the future. So I still have no problem on that, because I had no problem with it two years ago, so tonight I'd have no problem with it as well. So just saying that. Any other board members have any comments? Rich?
No, I, I, the only question I have is whether we needed a, an updated LRTA letter confirming your parking arrangements, which I guess we do.
Yeah, we can get that, too. It's not a problem.
I'm in agreement with my colleagues in terms of a minor modification here, now that it's clear.
Dick? Yep. Thank you. Just two things, and I think we've already covered them, but I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, that's all.
I just want to make sure that the island, you know, doesn't get lost in the shuffle should, you know, the fact that we need the turning radius for the fire department. So if that were to become a raised island to prevent, you know, a pork chop or to be a pork chop or something of that nature, then there would need to be some modification made to accommodate, you know, fire department access. And so I just want to, you know, make sure, I think we've pretty much said the same thing, you know, but not in those exact words. The other thing is, and I think you've already answered it as well, but is the percentage of relief, you know, on the parking relatively proportionate to what the relief was in 2016?
Yeah. Yes, I would say that that's true.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to, just to revisit the traffic channelization island just one more time. Definitively, if it is not an acceptable turn in, we will make it such, or they will construct it such that it, you cannot make that turn without it being a challenging thing for cars, because as we know, people will, if they're not physically prevented from turning, they will, they will make the turning movements that they choose. And signage won't change that. So, yeah.
Okay.
I'm absolutely in agreement.
Those two issues, you know, being clarified, I would consider this to be a minor modification as well.
Okay. So saying all that, we need a vote. Dick, do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I would approve the request for the minor modification with the, you know, for the modification of the percent, of the relief on parking, which is consistent with 2016's approval. And also that any modifications to the traffic patterns after a 60-day trial need to be approved by the board as well.
Okay. Motion is made, and do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes, so your modification is approved. Good luck.
Thank you, guys, very much. Have a great night. Thank you.
Do you have any idea when the commercial part might be opening up? I mean, if those restaurants you're talking about?
The, the residential is a little bit ahead of the commercial. We expect, especially when people get moved in there, there'll be a high demand for the resident, for the restaurants to follow soon after.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along on the agenda, we have the meeting schedule revised, I think, Patrick. We changed one date in April, that was it. Thank you very much. So we had one change in April, and that was all, so that's been accepted by the board. Any of the board members have any further comments for the board?
The next historic board meeting is on October 13th.
Okay.
I believe it's a Monday.
Okay. I just have one comment. I just want to thank the city manager. The city manager have reappointed me to another five-year term, and I want to thank the city council for approving my appointment. So I want to thank both. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any further updates?
Mr. Chairman, we have some minutes for approval.
Oh, sure. I want to get back to those. Thank you. So the, we'll start with the October 1st one. Good night, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have some slight revisions on this. If, and the pages are not numbered, so if we could flip all the way to my comments, I think they're, hmm, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight pages into the minutes here. Just to clarify a few things on here, Patrick, God forbid, these would be the minutes that somebody would read and say, what is he claiming? So on the, the third sentence, oh, I guess it would be, yeah, third sentence, I was one of the most actively people who served on the, on the master plan committee, if we could clarify that. And, and it says, I revamped the city zoning code. That's pretty good, huh? And created.
Patrick, we have to check the, check the tape to see if he really said that or not.
So I was, I was, I was very involved with the revamping of the city's zoning code and, and the creation of the protectable master plan. And I was extremely heavily involved. And again, like I said, to my efforts, that's why I served on the panel at the citizen planning sessions at, at Holy Cross, but I didn't write it. George Proakis and Adam Backy, I think, deserve most of the credit on that one. And the zoning subcommittee worked very hard on that. I worked with, actually, Bill Martin was the chairman at the time. So just want to clarify that. And then I did misspeak, but if we could correct it in the minutes, with 40A is silent on site plan review, not 40B, the mass ordinance, zoning ordinance. And then on the next page, under Jeffrey Durk, it's more, there is, and the thing is if you, and it says done, it should be, don't have existing conditions. And then on that same page, under my comments, would be one, two, three, fourth from the bottom, I agree technically with not reviewing the proposal for the temple, which is, obviously that's, that's an interesting, based on the email we received this afternoon, technically won't be a submission, but it will be for discussion the same night that we're reviewing Market Basket. So I find that very intriguing. But those would be my revisions, Mr. Chairman.
So do we have a motion to amend the minutes for October 1st? Motion been made by Mr. Vichette. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So those motions, so motion been made and seconded and has approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Nieske, you vote for minutes? Okay. So all in favor, that's approved. So the March 5th ones, we continued out to 11:19. And did we have the six, anybody have the 6-4 ones? Did we get those?
Yeah.
You got those?
Yep.
Anybody have any question on the 6-4 ones?
I do have some revisions on that, Mr. Chairman. Again, well, these were lengthy, these were lengthy meetings. And I did listen to the tape, and it was very difficult to write down what it was I was saying, so I can appreciate the challenge.
Goes back 10 seconds, and I just keep clicking it to kind of get what.
I understand. Two, three, four, five, six pages in.
So in the future, Patrick, I think Jeremy wants you to number the minute pages if you could.
That would be helpful. When they're long, when they're long meetings, I guess it's.
If it's two pages, like after tonight's minutes, like, we probably have those by tomorrow. Spend more time directing the minutes on the minutes on the minute for the agenda for this evening.
Yeah. And then it would be the, let's see, the third sentence, this is the, actually, it would be the fourth sentence, this is, we were looking to form a suburban SMU waterfront, should be zone, that would be more sensitive to the neighborhood character. It says here, property not to be developed. That was not, the intent was to change, the intent was to change the, the, oh, the suburban mixture zone that's there to a suburban waterfront zone, and that it would be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and address some of the concerns, which, which go on to, you know, which you, I did go on to say, we ask for high quality of landscape, design, architecture, but that was the whole idea, not, not to prevent development, but to, to be more in keeping with the neighborhood character. And that was, that was all I had on that, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else, have any changes to the 6-4 minutes? If not, motion to approve is amended by Mr. Vichette, was made by Mr. Vichette.
Motion to amend.
Seconded by Ms. Nieske. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So 6-4 and 10-1 minutes have been approved. Any further comments from staff?
We do have a couple of things for the next meeting, the Kmai Temple on Barnum Ave in Townsend, and then we have an substantial change request for the Stratham Street subdivision.
Which street is it, I'm sorry?
Stratham Street. I haven't sent you guys that request yet.
Okay.
And then.
Oh, Stratham Street, yeah.
I believe that's it.
Okay.
19th.
And then obviously the Market Basket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything further from the board members? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.